Many blessings that you blessed upon us. We thank you for the many, many women who have given the ultimate sacrifice in defending our freedoms as we celebrated that yesterday with Memorial Day. We thank you for the many, many women overseas and abroad as well as at home who continue to serve our country and protect us and protect our freedoms and what our country stands for. We thank you for the many, many women in law enforcement, EMS, first responders, fire, and others who are protecting us and keeping us safe. We ask that you be with each and every one of us today to give us the wisdom to make the right decisions as we serve as citizens of Hart County. And we ask that you be with each and every one of us as we leave tonight after the public's business is conducted and keep us safe as we go home to our families. It's in your name we pray. Amen. This time I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unreguiled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I'll call to order the May 26th meeting of the Hart County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to welcome everyone here and those watching on TV and YouTube. First item of business tonight will be to approve the agenda. Any changes? Just on the executive session, we do want to add litigation.
Okay.
Walter, are you familiar with what we talked about last week? So with that change, could I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended by adding litigation to executive session?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Carter, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is approve minutes of the previous meetings. You've got the May 12th, 2020 regular meeting minutes in your packet. Could I get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the 5/12/20 regular meeting minutes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Teasley. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Sayer. Commissioner Carter wasn't here. I assume you're going to stay in this vote. No motion, a second. Any more discussion? Public comment on the minutes? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried three oh with Commissioner Carter abstaining. Remarks by invited guests, committees, and authorities? We don't have anyone. Reports by constitutional officers and department heads? Mr. Gordon?
I'll have a separate report tonight. I've got a couple things on the agenda.
County administrators' report? Just one thing, I just want to remind everybody about the early voting is still going on. It's been going on for a couple of weeks. I'm sure everybody realizes it's been temporarily moved out to the AgroScience Center. So that boy's space, there's plenty of room out there. And certainly encourage everyone to take advantage of it for the next couple of weeks. That's all I got. Chairman's report? Just want to remind everybody as we get into the vacation season and the months of July, we targeted four dates for budget meetings, Tuesdays and Thursdays, the second, fourth week after you get everything done. I know things may be delayed.
Correct. I have, I think all of them out to the department heads and constitutional officers now getting their request in. Hopefully in the next week or two, I'll have those back in. We should be set up sometime middle of July toward the last meeting of July.
Okay, so we may have to reschedule those budget meetings. But our goal is to get everything out on time and get the tax bills out on time. There's also some concerns about what digest is going to be used. So there's some things that may come out of Atlanta that we don't know yet, but just FYI. Commissioners' report, District Two?
I appreciate everything that our law enforcement, first responders, EMS, fire department, county employers are doing. I know we just come off of Memorial Day weekend, and I want to say this, I appreciate our military past and present for what they do about trying to keep our country safe. That's all I got. District Three?
Also, I'd like to commend our service men that are still serving and those that have gone on before us. I appreciate the freedom that we have here in this country, and I know that it became real with sacrifices to these families and these that gave their lives. I just want to say I appreciate that.
District Four?
Yeah, I've got a few things. I've had reports, calls about things going on up at Milltown Campgrounds. I decided to go up there and take a look. I took some pictures. I think we need to sort this stuff out at a later time. I just want to give you a heads up on that. Yesterday with Memorial Day, kind of hard to say thank you to someone that ain't no longer with us. But I like to say thank you to their families, and I know that their families have an empty place that they will never be able to fill. I appreciate all the service people. That's all I got to say, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. That being said, we'll move on into old business. Item 12A, timber permits ordinance amendment, second reading. As a result of our last meeting, there were some changes that were made. This will bring us into compliance with a change in state law. Mr. Gordon?
I have that with the changes and did not get that in time to, for it to be put in your agenda. Thank you. So let me just pass this out. This should be, I've got this from everybody. I have one for the press meeting. You have seen this, gentlemen, before. At your last meeting, there were two changes made. One was in the first section on definitions, we added to the definition of timber, we had basically said that it meant pulpwood or logs, and we've added the words poles, posts, or woodchips to make that very clear. And then on the section, on the next page, section 6633, which is liability for damages and violations, I have added language in there. If you'll just read with me, and I'll tell you where it, when it starts, but it now states timber harvester transporter and/or the property owner shall be liable to the county for damage to county or county maintained roads caused by the transport of timber in an amount necessary to return such roads to their normal and usual condition. And this is where we've added, and to clear such roads of mud, dirt, wood, or debris of any type. And then it picks up again, together with all court costs in the event this issue is litigated in any manner. Those are the two changes. We did make a technical change in the third page, which just changed the dates such that it would be considered the first reading tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions. But what this does is it is a full replacement of our current timber harvesting ordinance, and it follows the law, the state law. I don't mean to be a broken record, but once again, the state has restricted the authority of counties to make certain local decisions. But this ordinance is in compliance with that new state law.
I make a motion to take this as a second reading. A motion by Commissioner Sayer. Second reading. Second by Commissioner Teasley. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I've got a few concerns and questions. One of the things I sent in that I like to see, and some of our ordinance, and our ordinance book has this in it, and some of them don't. But I think that any ordinance should have a purpose and an intent. To me, I'd like to know what the purpose of any ordinance was, especially this one and others too. That's one of the things I'd like to see. And let's see. All right, in 6631, the definitions, it has no definition for public road, but public road is used in 6632A. So I think we might need to define public road.
Generally, Commissioner, when there's a reference to public roads, it's more expansive than county roads because beyond county roads, and it encompasses any and all roads generally used by the public, if it's placed in order and certainly had that.
Well, I think it should be defined or just used in here. That way everybody knows.
Well, public road could be one that is shared by private landowners and used by the public. Some of these old subdivisions had a lot of flag lots.
Yeah, I understand that.
This ordinance is geared toward county maintained, county roads. So I mean, that's...
Well, I understand that, but if it's a public road, it covers everything in my way of thinking. So if you're going to use a public road in there, I guess you should define what it is for this order, the purpose of this order. All right, nothing is said in here about keeping the road race clean during the work. I know they got to clean it up when they get done. If it's raining and mudding, they couldn't timber it. I think it needs to be said that it should be kept clean all, all the time, as clean as possible. And all doesn't say anything about putting the right of way and the ditches back the way they were. Also, I feel that they should have a requirement, that they have ingress and egress areas should be in such a place that it's located where you've got good sight distance. That protects the traveling public. It says we need to protect the traveling public, but it don't really say that. I think you need a safe entrance. All right, in 6635, in the old orders, mentions enforcement, but this right here don't have anything about enforcement. And I know last year we had a deal with the orders and said we couldn't do nothing about it because we didn't have an enforcement clause in that said order. And some of the orders has referred you back to 1-13, but if we're going to use that, then it sort of needs to be in this order too, does it not?
It talks about in 6633B.
Yeah, but can you put a stop order in if you see somebody violating the road? You know, we had this discussion last year, and we talked about it needs to be.
I don't think what was done in the state law allows mention to stop what order.
They may not, but...
Do we have a fine per violation of $1,000?
Yeah, I understand.
And the state took that authority away. The state just can't do more than that.
But if you go up there and the road's covered up with mud, what are you going to do? Are you going to make them clean it up?
That's when you attach their bond.
And then go up there?
Five thousand dollars, and you attach their bond for the violation of any of the technical parts of the ordinance, like they need to clean it up when they're through. And it does not have provisions that says they must clean it today, and if that's what the will apply, we'll put it.
I think it should be, especially based off of what we've dealt with with a certain logging out.
I agree too. Yeah.
Because we've all got calls about one certain one.
Yeah, I know when I was in the fire department a year ago, we used to have to go clean the roads up. At taxpayer expense.
Let me suggest then that you accept this as a first reading, not as a second, because there are going to be substantial changes next one. And that would now to be the one that you adopt. You do now that you adopt it on, on the chairman's honor. And that will hold that, so.
I'll amend my motion to make it the first reading. Second? All right, so I have an amended motion and second, that we take this as a first reading due to the substantial changes.
Mr. Chairman, on the, we want a definition of public roads. We want purpose and intent as a header. We want to include the restoration of the right of way and ditching if the right, if they're damaged, if they're not sure of plan of standing. We've got damage.
That's going to come into what we're going to talk about on 13D. Right of way and ditching. That'll come into these pre and post inspections.
It probably would be nice if it was in this ordinance here too.
We can put that on.
And any enforcement that we can do needs to be in here. It looks like we talked about in the past, if you can't enforce an order, they no need to have it.
The enforcement provision is section 6633, B, A, and B, and the violation is punished for by $1,500. The...
So that's all we can do?
Nothing according to the state.
And you can pay their bond for damages. But if it's, let's just say it's a national road, they fail to notify, that's by the law.
But what if they don't want to clean the road up like we're talking about putting in there?
That would be, that is a civil action that would be taken. Basically, you will have a bond, and you will execute on the bond if there are damages. Now, what that means is it's going to need to be a county employee out there every day to examine, work, and to, I presume, to certify the fact that it was done properly and that it's been cleaned up. And I don't know who is going to assign that responsibility to somebody.
Code enforcement officer.
Permit officer. The permitting officer is being responsible for giving the permit.
This will be code enforcement.
Let me ask another question. What is a fee? Permit fee?
Due to...
So we can't charge a permit fee for this?
Not according to state law.
Okay, I was wondering about that one.
County, state law, for example, and you can't charge a notice.
So basically, they just come in and tell you they're going to do it, and go on out there and do it.
That's correct. They give you a notice, and they can give you that notice required at any time, if they know what to do, if they know what they're going to do.
And before, our old ordinance had a $1,000 cash bond.
Yep.
This new one is a $5,000.
And it can be posted with a letter of credit.
Okay.
Well, that answered all my questions. Thank you.
Or body of custody.
Okay, I have an amended motion by Commissioner Sayer and amended motion by Commissioner Teasley to take this as a first reading with these substantial changes. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item 12B, intergovernmental agreement with the city of Hartwell regarding Hart State Park annexation. We've had conversations with city officials. We've, most of us, I don't know if, I know me, Marshall, and Frankie, I don't know if you've had any yet, Ricky or not, but a lot of concern with the annexation of Hart State Park and people in that surrounding area possibly being annexed by the city using a 60-40 rule, whereas 60% of the people can control the other 40% or landowners. We alluded to that as forced annexation, both indirectly, that's what it is. So there was some confusion up front, but since this has kind of moved forward, the Corps of Engineers has asked us to give them, you know, a yes or a no as to whether or not we oppose or support the annexation of Hart State Park. And we got to do that by Friday. We asked for a 30-day extension because of the COVID-19. They gave that to us, but they're doing answer on Friday of this week. There's been other areas of the county where people have started to question the 60-40 rule down North Forest Avenue around the Marina, where there's been talk before it could be anywhere. And one of the things that we had talked about as far as supporting the annexation of Hart State Park by the city is some kind of intergovernmental agreement so that the 60-40 rule cannot be invoked and pull people into the city. Now, I want to stay in a spirit of complete transparency. The city has never used that clause to do an annexation, and I don't think there will be an issue with the current city council members. But we all know as the times change, as time goes forward, things change. There could be new faces and new leadership on the city of Hartwell side as well as the Board of Commissioners. And our thoughts were that we should have an intergovernmental agreement in place that we would support the annexation of Hart State Park if the city would enter into a long-term intergovernmental agreement not to annex the 60-40 rule. They could still do annexations, but they would be 100% voluntary, and that's kind of where we're at today. Walter, you've done some work on this. You want, anything you want to add to it?
Let me just point out that there are three methods of annexation of county property by the city. One of them is on 100% consent of the landowners in the area to be annexed. That is a no brainer. That means everybody in that particular neighborhood wants to be annexed. That is consensual. The 60% method provides that there can be an annexation if 60% of the landowners who own at least 60% of the property agree to the annexation. And that, I think, is what you are referring to, that could conceivably involve unwilling property owners. Now, I know that the city's never done that, but they do have that authority to have to annex up to 40% of an area without consent. There is a third method which can be used, and that is one that you would have no control over other than, you know, the exercise of political influence, and that is by act of the state legislature. You know, the state legislature can compel a city and county to agree to an annexation should they pass a rule that does that. So those are the three methods for annexation. I think that the concern, if I understand the county's concern fully, it would be that annexation, if this annexation is approved, there has to be a connector. You can't annex something that you don't connect to. You can, well, now that gets into some technical stuff too, that's beyond the scope really of what they're doing here. But it does have to be connected. There's several requirements for the annex territory, and I'm not going to get into all of those because we've not yet seen the method that, or the route that would be proposed for use by the city to connect the current city limit to the park property. Basically, it can be done along the right of way, roads, streets, bridges, creeks, and rivers. And there, that's, it's not just that. I mean, there are other components to that rule as well. But I think if I understand the county's concern, that the city could annex a strip, a connector strip up the right of way of North Forest Avenue as an example, or up Ridge Road as another example, Ridge Road, Hart State Park Road. And then could begin to branch annexation off of those connectors as long as 60% of landowners would agree.
Say, Walter, like, what you're talking about now, like, I know we're talking about Ridge Road, but it would also be all these roads that go off to it, like Sunny Brook Lane, Peak Estates, Stillwood.
Well, conceivably it could. I mean, they'd have to annex it to, well, if they went up Ridge Road and they wanted to annex something in Stillwood, then I presume that they could map the route along Stillwood Drive, you know, up Ridge Road to Stillwood Drive. I've not really thoroughly examined that, that way of doing it because there are other requirements. And one, and I don't know, the county doesn't yet know the path of the annexation. It's only been proposed to be the city, I mean, the state park property, the federal property that is leased to the state. And there's not been a disclosure of the path that would be followed, and that's a whole nother issue there. I don't represent the city, and I don't advise the city, but there are still other things that have to be taken into account. For example, annexed property has to abut no less than 1/8 of the city limits. I believe that's the way it's expressed. But no need to get into that right now. But those are the methods for annexation. Yeah, 100% consent, 60% consent, and act of the state legislature.
So basically, all we're approving is, is that we don't have a, we approve it or whatever. All we're saying is that we ain't got a problem with the city annexing Hart State Park. There's, we ain't approving it or disapproving it or whatever that'll be up to somebody else about the way the route goes.
Well, the way this agreement is drafted in all cases, it has, if it's, if it's accepted by the city, then I don't think in good faith you could object to the state park annexation, regardless of what route they may use. What this does is it basically says that you won't object if they agree they won't use that 60% method to annex anything else. If they, just taking Stillwood, for example, if 100% of the people in the Stillwood subdivision wanted to be annexed to the city, that could be done.
But that would all be voluntary.
Yeah.
Totally voluntary, so let's make sure we're clear on that. If we pass this intergovernmental agreement, it's got to be contingent upon us saying to the Corps of Engineers, we're okay with the annexation. The purpose of this agreement is if we do that, then there's protection for those folks who are in the county who don't want to be annexed into the city using the 60-40 rule. It would only be on a voluntary basis.
Or by act of the state.
Right, right.
But I do want to emphasize that the, it would, it would not be in good, if there were some other reason to object to the park annexation. I think that once this agreement is adopted, you've given that up. I don't really know what that might be, but, because that does, it's a good determination to be predicated on knowing the route, and we don't know that. We've heard a couple of different things.
Well, we'd be pretty much being asked to vote in a blind, in my opinion.
In a certain sense, you are.
How are you being asked to vote in a blind?
Well, we don't know the path they're going to take.
Path's irrelevant.
Well, not necessarily, because it says right here on the whole ad, because annexations under this procedure would result in annexation of a strip of land located generally along the right of way of North Forest Avenue.
Which is going to come first, Ricky, the agreement or the annexation?
And let me finish reading. In Ponarosa Drive, County Route Number 325, the county is concerned that this will result in other properties on North Forest Avenue and Ponarosa Drive. It does not mention any properties around the state park. So if you want to keep the annexation for 50 years or 25 years or whatever we decide to do, to me, you need to be specific on the area you're talking about, because we just can't tell the city, they can't go nowhere in the county and do this. Am I right or am I wrong?
Read the paragraph it starts with accordingly.
Well, now, it would be...
What are we talking about?
It would primarily relate to the...
Any annexation period.
In any part of the county.
Yes.
The way it's written is pretty broad. It would be in any part of the county.
I think it's very, to me, it's clear. It says accordingly, "The city and the county agree that the city will not annex properties within the county pursuant to OCGA 36-3632, which authorizes the city to annex properties with the consent of 60% of the electors residing in an area proposed for annexation. Otherwise, this provision could authorize the city to annex an area without consent of as much as 40% of the residents in an area proposed for city annexation." That covers that.
I was thinking the whole time, we were only talking about state park, so you're going to say the same thing.
You got to do it county-wise.
Well, okay, I'm fine with it.
I mean, that's, you've got other areas where we're starting to get questions about it down, like I said, as I did in the introduction, talking about North Forest Avenue and the Marina area down there, which is still in the county. There's been talk about that in the past. I've had calls from people down there. I've had calls from people down there. We all know about the Ridge Road area with Hillendale and those other subdivisions. You know, Hillendale's right there beside it. But this would apply to the whole county, not just that area.
My whole understanding of this thing, the way I read this, they're going to go down North Forest Avenue to Ponarosa Drive.
But we don't know that.
Right.
That's in the agreement.
That we have agreed to that if that's what they do, and should they give the route.
But what I was thinking, we were thinking about just the area around the park. Now we're saying, okay, you can't do it nowhere in the county. And I understand that, and I'm good with it. That, I guess, should cover it all on the basis.
So regardless of the path that they take, nobody, if this agreement is executed, first of all, for this agreement to be executed, we have to give our consent to the Corps of Engineers Friday, which has to be part of this vote. If we give our consent that we're okay with it, then it's got to be contingent upon this agreement. That way, we protect those who have voiced their concern, who are our constituents at this point in time, who don't want to be caught by the sixty forty rule. And as I said earlier, the city's never used that, and I don't think that they will. But things change over time. Five years from now, the whole landscape could change, and this could be something that the city's out doing. I had a gentleman tell me last week, he left the city, and he left the city for a reason, and it was the taxes. And he moved further down Ridge Road, and now the, you know, the city's trying to go that route. By doing this, this protects him. So I think it's in the best interest of everybody, if you go back and think about things several years ago, this board wrote a letter on behalf of the Board of Commissioners for the City of Hartwell, supporting them being able to get Hart State Park. So we've went on record that we supported the project. I think we need to finish the deal, let them, if they want to annex it, give the Corps our blessings, provided they sign this intergovernmental agreement. If they don't, then we say no.
Also, I might point out that nothing prevents the city from entering into long-term leases on the property and operating the property as it is. In other words, there's nothing, they can operate the property as a county, well, it's not really, the county property is owned by the federal government, but they could operate the property and do all of the things that they have planned out there without city annexation. I'm presuming, and I don't know this, but I'm presuming that the reason that they wish to annex, because there'd be no tax advantage to it, to the city, I'm presuming that the reason they want to annex is so that they can run city services there. I think they, I'm not sure about the water supply. They may already run the water there. I'm sure they have a gas line there, but they don't have sewer, and to develop that property is going to require a significant, maybe multi-million dollar investment in sewer infrastructure.
They do have water lines down Ridge Road. I do know that, because we've talked about those before.
And that's probably where that water, where the water's coming from.
I'm going to make a motion that we, the board authorized me to give the Corps of Engineers that we're okay with the annexation of Hart State Park, provided the City of Hartwell approves this intergovernmental agreement with one change, and that being the term from fifty years down to twenty-five.
I'll second.
So I have a motion by Chairman Dorsey that the Board of Commissioners authorized him to communicate to the Corps of Engineers that the Board of Commissioners does not oppose the annexation of the Hart State Park by the city, contingent upon the approval of this intergovernmental agreement with the change being twenty-five years. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I got one thing I want to say. When I was asking my question, my concern, I was not against Hart State Park, Hart State Park being annexed. I just wanted to make sure it was clear on everything that was going to happen.
And I feel the same way that you felt about it. I'm not against it. I remember we wrote a letter, you know, and it is what it is.
I have one question in your motion. If the city does not accept the agreement, you notify the Corps.
We got to tell them no.
Got to tell them, okay. I'm going to be sure that.
We got to do that Friday, and the mayor's well aware of that. Because we're running out of time.
Good as soon as second.
More. Any more discussion, public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda, moving into new business, the Georgia Lake Hartwell subdivision approval.
Yes, this is a, you want me to get it? This is a subdivision, proposed subdivision for the land you see on your screen here, over Early Drive. Looking at it, the top side, to the left side, going down, be Phase One. Right side, or the bottom side, looking at there, be Phase Two. I have the drawings here, and the water authorities satisfied with the, all arrangements, maybe the water authority that helped, has approved it. And everything else is in order with the two, with the two subterranean.
So we've got a couple of questions. This is more for Pat. I hate to put Pat on the spot. What's, how far is the subdivision from a current existing water line?
Pretty much right there. About to begin the property. Part of the tightrope is down into the subterranean, just a hundred feet or so.
The reason I'm caught, I'm questioning that is there's a statement in the fifth paragraph of our packet about cost sharing.
Well, now, that was mine, because I didn't know what their arrangement was. I didn't knew that.
That's why I'm asking that question.
Yeah, well, Julie has agreed to do, and you can speak either way.
Is it, I think, I agree that it's taken that?
Yeah, man, that's just part of the requirements. That's why I'm asking. When it says cost sharing, and we're talking about a major subdivision, we got to be consistent as you want to.
That's my fault. That's my poor wording of the memo.
Okay. That was only a question I had. I guess just for you, timing on phases.
Phase one is ready. Now, Phase two will probably be six to eight months out. Phase two, I guess Lily and then I've changed a couple of things.
Right, yeah, Lily's got, she's approved the overall Phase Two aspect of it. The individual lots, she wants to come back and look at after she gets her road.
And then find three, get a permit from the second one. The first one's ready, but I need pre-vehicle to be able to even, right here, to do any grading. So then she can look at the lot and send it to people.
They get a motion, so moved, the Georgia Lake Hartwell subdivision. Motion by Commissioner Carter, a second.
We approve in both phases this time. I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Sayer. Any more discussion, public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. The next item on the agenda is request for pay for experience at the road department as part of our normal policy, when we hire folks from the outside who have experience. The county has a policy that we give credit for experience that's verified. The request is to give an employee ten years' credit for experience as an equipment operator, heavy equipment operator one.
I make a motion, we approve. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sayer, a second by Commissioner Teasley. Any more discussion, public comment? When was his hire date? Has he started yet?
He hasn't started yet.
Okay, so we'll be good then.
On the next paper.
Okay. All right, I have a motion, a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item thirteen B, I'm sorry, thirteen C, FY twenty twenty-one Public Defender Budget Request. We've got good news. The public defender's budget request is actually about two thousand dollars less than last year. Always a good thing. This is based off the caseload. Walter, you got anything else you want to add to?
No, I think that's, as you correctly summarized, each year through the day, a restatement of debt based on current expenses, but also based on the, you know, the general load also, and size of the individual county. Not all counties have the same load. Some years we've had the large load, but this year we're a little bit better off, so at least in comparison to other counties. So that's why we have a reduction this year.
That being said, taking a motion that we approve the Public Defender's Budget Request.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Teasley, a second.
I'll give you a second.
Second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion, public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously.
Chairman, there was another matter that I was informed of today, and I'm not sure if this would have to be voted on by the Hart County, but there is a small surplus in the Public Defender state funds, because the, there was a position that was built for a while. But basically, they're on the basis of the system, they're hoping to use those funds to carry new help. But again, I think that is state funds, which you've done every authority over in the, if you imagine the action, I guess this would be proper to say so then.
Not a problem. Moving on to thirteen D, County Right-of-Way Utility Construction, pre and post inspections by road department. Not throwing anybody under the bus, we're just going to call it like it is. The water authority, we get constant complaints about after the fact. Driveways, we all get them. They don't seem to get fixed, and my purpose of putting this on the agenda was to have the county administrator come up with a policy or a procedure where the road department is involved in pre and post inspections. Now, supposedly, they go out and video things beforehand and after, they've got something to review. I know I have communicated this at the water authority meeting about issues with the contractor. Not throwing anybody under the bus, because there's multiple contractors, I think, or there was. But we have a problem, and we're the ones that hear it. And I want to get something in place so we can put this issue to bed once and for all.
Well, basically, on our permit, the simplest thing would be do on our permitting part is, now that I try to turn the permits around as quick as I can, it may throw an extra day in the permitting process to send somebody out to look at it beforehand. And past the fence, it's not only the water authority.
It's others, but that's.
It is others. We got to do it, we got to do it on everyone, and we can't do one not to do it on everybody.
And this is going to come into play with the logging thing as well, too.
Correct. We already do it on, we already do it now on timber permits. The road department checks the entry before they start, and then go back after the fence and check. But we have been doing that on utility permits, but we can, we just send somebody out to check them, get a picture or two beforehand, and go back out after they're through before we release the permit, and close the permit out and be sure everything's okay.
I think when that permit is ready to be closed out, we don't need to go right then. We need to give that two or three weeks after the fact.
Well, right now, we don't close it out. It just, they finish it up, we don't go back and look at it.
That way, you got an opportunity to see what's like after rain, or whatever the case may be, or say thirty days, because it's constant complaints.
Well, I know, yeah. I hear, I hear as many of them as y'all do. But that's the only way I know to try to get a handle on it, is, and like I said, I don't hold anybody yet, but most times, there's plenty of lead time on permits for utilities. It's very seldom, it's the rush matter, and we just had to assign somebody in the road department to go look at them before they start.
And there's got to be accountability with the road department personnel as well. They're going to sign off on something, it's got to be right.
Correct.
So I'll put that in the form of a motion that we have the county administrator develop a procedure for right-of-way utility construction, both pre and post inspections, that will involve road department personnel. Is there a second?
I'll give you a second, though, but I've got some concerns.
I have a second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I got, I got a few concerns. You think, I'm going to ask the question, this is probably going to be a Walter question. Should we make this an ordinance, or should we just make it just county policy?
Are we talking about timber, the?
Right-of-way. Right-of-way permits, utilities.
Utilities.
It's covered on the ordinance.
It could be done by either, I think it's relative, it may be more, may have more benefits in a little bit.
I'd like to see it in the ordinance.
I don't have a problem with it, but you got, the water authority's already signing off on your stuff anyway, right? You guys, you go out and approve their work after the fact, right?
It's in all paperwork, yes.
So, I mean, there's your checks and balances there.
If you remember, I brought this up several times in the past, and I've had Senator Charles some pictures, and I wish we had them, we could show. Pat's got a copy of them, and I've talked bad about it, and I've talked to some other people on the water authority about, and it's, like I say, I ain't throwing a water authority under the bus, because it all comes back to this board right here. We're responsible for making sure that people do what they're supposed to do and protect taxpayers' property. And I'm a firm believer, and if you're going to do this, if you have to, you need to be specific in what you require them to do. You know, you think people knows everything that you know, but a lot of times, they don't. And that's why I like things to be specifically spelled out and what they got to do. And Charles told me that day, he had a drawing when they cut roads and stuff like that.
There, in the permitting pack, there are specifics about, well, how many pages instructions?
What's that?
In the permitting packet that you fill out, there's several pages of instructions that have things got to be done. So it's pretty well clear-cut. And it is covered under the ordinance. I can't flop ahead, I can't remember which ordinance it's in, but it is covered by an ordinance.
I've seen the utility thing, but I've never seen no clear-cut specifics.
Well, you can't get specific on everything in the world.
I understand.
It's going to be what they do for a water line is going to be different what they do for a bore under a road for fiber insulation or something like that. So you got to kind of keep it. The goal is to have the post-work final result be the same as the pre-work beginning. That's the goal. And whether we do it in a procedure or an ordinance, it doesn't matter to me. But we got to do something, because this is, this is getting out of hand.
Can I say a few things?
Yeah.
About any major project that can be done by major, typically competitive.
The project, it's a condition that the contractor has to do a pre-construction video. The intent, it's twofold intent. The intent is to accomplish what you gentlemen are trying to do. It also sometimes protects the contractor. As I've come to contractors, defensive, that's when they were bored or somebody's paved driveway, and the guy will say, my driveway was perfect ahead of time, and now it's cracking. Well, when you have a pre-construction video, that's going to show you that that's not the case. Yeah, I'm not saying our contractors are perfect by any stretch, but I bring up the point of the pre-construction video, and we can have it done on any smaller project, too, is that it may help the county, that's a matter of public record, obviously, it may, it may help the county not have to go out there in the beginning. I can see that getting to be a bit of a cumbersome process, but if we have a good video, the county could welcome to take the video, too. I will say, it's been a struggle for our contractor. We've gone, going eighty-seven different directions on small projects. He's doing Julie's projects on it, we pulled him off of this major project to do other smaller projects. I'm not making excuses, but like in your area, like E. Bailey Road, shortly after you put seed and straw down, we had that five-plus inches rainfall, you know? Again, he should fix it, he will fix it, I'm sure that'll happen, but, and you know what, I'm not picking on the road department or anybody in the county, but there are, there are pre-existing issues out there in some areas, like if you've got a driveway pipe under a driveway, and it's kind of been beaten down on it, and it's not going to let the water flow the way it should. Again, we've just had some crazy rains over the last few months, too.
Well, one thing that I'm concerned about is the fact that when they put the valves, you know, sometimes it's right in the middle of where the ditch flow, and that's going to make it almost impossible to maintain a ditch later on down the road. So you need to come up with some kind of way to eliminate that.
And part of that is because of the different rights of way in Hart County. Sometimes you don't have too much choice, you don't want to get too close to the road when you're excavating, because even if you back foot pretty well, you get that issue of it sloughing off the edge of the asphalt and so forth. Yeah, I'm not making excuses at all.
And I'm going to be honest, we, if we create. And I'm gonna be honest with you, if we create this ordinance, or whatever you wanna call it, that needs to be part of your bid package. They need to know exactly what they're gonna have to do when they, before they put the bid in, because that could affect the time, amount of time they're gonna have in the job, and that may change a bit.
No, we, we want our contractors to abide by whatever regulations the county has. We've had a good relationship over the years, and stuff gets taken care of.
I'm not throwing a contract under the bus, but, you know, sometimes you gotta be clear and concise exactly what you expect out of it.
B Bailey Road, when was that one done? I've had several complaints about that one.
Oh, that's, I guess he was probably laying pipe there back in January time.
Well, the grass that hadn't been up long, but it, it has, it's been recently. But I got pictures of that one.
Some of the pictures you got, you sent them to Terrell, Terrell forwarded to me.
I mean, some of that.
I got complaints about that one last week, again. Well, and, and in Pat's defense for this reality of the world, on sixty, seventy percent of our road, we don't have any right-of-way. So, yeah, I would, I would much rather Pat never put a water line down in our ditch, but on the bulk of our road, all we got's the top of the ditch on each side is a right-of-way, so...
Let me just, that's what you're talking about, is that what we have, you have a right-of-way, but it is not a re-made written or detailed.
Correct, it's, it's a prescription.
It's a right-of-way by prescription, which goes from the top of one ditch, under the ditch, across the road, under the ditch, to the top of the other side. That is our right-of-way, and in some cases, that's as little as eighteen feet, sometimes maybe less.
I've seen some of them go in and put rocks in the ditch, look for, to slow down erosion, but in the long run, that makes the ditch fill up behind the rocks, and that creates less flow. That's something we need to look at. Uh, the guy that's doing the road up around my house, he used straw, which it, it'll degrade, but it's still sometimes clogged. As a matter of fact, one of the, uh, plane come out there that day, and it got, and the rain is hard, and this, I'm not blaming this on him, but it, the pipe above it clogged it with leaves. It come around the driveway, and it washed out the road all. I mean, it's that deep, and...
Okay.
But that was soft dirt.
No, I think we all, we all know where we headed, where we needed to go. No sense in continuing to beat a dead horse, so. I've got a motion and a second to have the county administrator, uh, if that's an ordinance or a procedure or what, just put something together, and let's take a look at it at next meeting if you could, Terrell. If everybody's okay with that. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Uh, next item on the agenda is public comment. If anybody's got anything for public comment. Uh, if anybody at home has any public comments or questions, if you'll contact us or, uh, call us or whatever, we'll be happy to get you an answer. Uh, since there's nobody for public comment, can I get a motion? We go into executive session, personnel litigation.
Make a motion, we go into executive session for personnel litigation.
Second, motion by Commissioner Sayer, and second by Commissioner Teasley. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Don't read this.
Before we go into executive session, I just...
Well, their graciousness allowing us to meet here, but we can social distance, and, uh, it makes it easier for the guys doing the TV and, uh, family and everything, as well as for Lisa as well. So, just wanted to thank them again for their kindness in allowing us to use this facility. So, all right, I'm gonna go into executive session.